And I believe that Councilmember Donovan will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If we could all please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Donovan, for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening and welcome to the November sixteenth study session of the Livonia City Council. This meeting sets the agenda for the 1,910th regular meeting, which is a voting meeting that will take place on Wednesday, December second, 2020. I believe that we have all members of the council with us this evening. All right. We had the mayor with us in the last, at the regular meeting, and she provided an update for anyone who was, anyone who's listening in or on Zoom, provided an update on COVID response. The city has returned to remote working, having employees work remotely, and asking that all business be conducted via, via appointment. So City Hall is not open for people to simply come in and conduct their business. We're asking that, that all business be done by appointment, and that if you come to City Hall to pay your taxes, if you need to pay them, if you feel the need to pay them in person, you'll have to call and be admitted to City Hall and go directly to the Treasurer's office. The other announcement that I have to make is regarding item number, item number two, and this is a request to approve the building of an ice rink within Dover Park. It was, we hoped that we would be able to have the closed captioning available on demand this evening, as any of you who were in the last meeting heard the petitioner or someone representing the petitioner request closed captioning. We are not able to have that in place for this evening's meeting, and we did not unfortunately receive the request with adequate time in order to ensure that we had that. And the requirement under ADA is that we provide accommodations like closed captioning as long as adequate request is, the request is given with adequate notice, and we didn't have adequate notice. So we will, we will, unless the petitioner wants to do it differently, we can move this item, once we get to it, to the, to the study meeting of December second, 2020.
Madam President.
Yes, Vice President Barr.
I just want to say, in your defense, you didn't say this, but for the woman that talked to us in the last meeting, we, as of a half an hour ago, we thought we did have that ability, and we just learned that. So you were not given, to the woman who I assume is listening, you were not given false information by President McIntyre in the last meeting. At that point, we thought we had it. In spite of the fact of not having it with adequate notice, we thought we had it anyway, and we just learned minutes ago that we didn't.
Thank you, Vice President Barr, and we did think we had it, and if we had it, we would certainly never say that we just weren't going to make it available because we didn't have whatever adequate notices. Unfortunately, we weren't able to get it running tonight, and so we will, but we will have it available for the next meeting of December second, 2020. At this time, we go to the audience for audience communication. If there's anyone who would like to address the council, and this is a time to address the council on not, on any item that is not on this evening's agenda. So if you want to address a particular, a specific agenda item, I would ask you to wait until that agenda item is presented before you, before you raise your hand. Does anyone else in the council have any announcements they'd like to make? All right, I'll just remind everyone that this is a vote's taken. The council members will, however, offer either one resolution or combination of resolutions for each item. Resolutions offered may include an approving, denying, or referring resolution to a committee or city department for its report and recommendation. A resolution, no further action, may also be offered. There are some items that were simply received and filed for the information of the City Council. Please note that all of the items on tonight's agenda that will move on to the regular meeting on Wednesday, December second, 2020, where they will officially be voted upon. If you would like to participate in any of the agenda items that are taken up this evening, please use the raise hand button on, on the Zoom screen, or if you're joining us by phone, press pound nine when that item is called, and you'll be recognized at the appropriate time. Generally, the petitioner, whether that is the city or a private entity, will make the initial presentation, followed by remarks from those in the audience who wish to speak. When you are called upon, please speak, please state your name and address for the record so that your remarks may be properly attributed to you in the minutes for the meeting. It will also let the television audience and the council members know whom is speaking to them, who is speaking to them. And with that, we will go on to item, new business, and this is item number one. This is a request to extend waiver use approval to the new owner, Yan Gaki Yan, to operate a massage establishment, Omorphea Aesthetics, within the Burton Hollow Shopping Center, located on the east side of Farmington Road between Sixth Mile and Curtis Avenue, 17142 Farmington Road, Section 10, and this is Council Resolution 70 dash 20. Is there anyone who would like to present information on this, on this item? I see that we have Galaxy Tab A. Good evening, Galaxy Tab A. Good evening.
Good evening.
All right. In the regular meeting, it was Galaxy, the, the, the audience member known as Galaxy Tab A, who called in asking to address the council and asking about the closed caption on the building of an ice rink within Dover Park. And I just, I just indicated that closed captioning, we could not, we were not able to make it available for this evening's meeting.
Madam President?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt. It is showing up as an option at the bottom of the Zoom screen right now.
Councilmember Jolly, I was just going to make that announcement. Anyway, I.
See that, I can see it.
Yeah, we just, I just received, and thank you, Mr. Jolly, and I had emailed, texted or notes from several other council members. I did get notification that it is.
Raise your hand. Can you hear me?
At this time, at this time, we're waiting for the petitioner from item number one, Yan Gaki Yuan, to, to address the council on this item. I don't see Yan Gaki. Mr. Taramina, do you have any information about the petitioner's intent to?
Yeah, Galaxy. Actually, I, I was not, it was not provided with any details.
Okay.
Regarding this request to transfer the waiver, but I can tell you, and hopefully you have the information. This goes back to a petition that was filed and approved in 2016 involving, involving Omorphea Aesthetics. And one of the conditions of approval with that, for that waiver use to operate a massage establishment was that the petitioner would have to enter into a conditional agreement limiting the waiver use to that user only, and it could not be extended to any other or any new user without first obtaining the approval of City Council. So that's why this item is, is for you. I do not have any information about the, the, the new business owner in this case.
Thank you, Mr. Taramina. Council, seeing as we don't have the petitioner with us this evening, Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you, Madam President. I just grabbed down some notes, looking at the packet item. It might be fairly light. It did even really list the, the only thing it listed was a, was a license number through the state, of which I did look up, and it does show in good standing since 2014. But it really doesn't show any kind of a plan on, you know, if anything is planning on changing, if any of the options for the massage parlor is going to offer any kind of new services. It seems to be lacking, in my opinion. And for that reason, at least for right now, I would, I'd be willing to offer a denying resolution until we can at least see some more information.
So you, you want to offer denying resolution?
That's correct.
Okay. Councilmember McCullough has offered a denying resolution, council. Is there anyone else who?
Madam President, I would just ask that that gets put on the regular agenda to afford the petitioner an opportunity to come before us if they choose to do so.
All right. So we have, we have offered a denying resolution, and then we also have a resolution for approval on the regular agenda.
No, Madam President. I'm just asking that the denial be put on the regular.
Oh, I'm, okay, thank you. I under, okay, I understand. I'm sorry, Mr. Jolly, I put words in your mouth. Okay, so we have a denying resolution that will go on the regular agenda. Anyone else? All right. With this, we will move on to item number two, and this is a request to approve the building of an ice rink within Dover Park, and this comes to us from Louis Sismadia, and I apologize if I did not pronounce it correctly, to construct a 50-foot by 80-foot ice rink with lights for use by the public. And.
Sismadia, yes.
Good evening. Is this, is this Mr. Sismadia, and did I pronounce your name correctly?
Good evening.
Yes.
All right.
I didn't know we were Galaxy Ten, okay? Sorry.
Galaxy, you show up as Galaxy Tab A, so.
Tab A, okay, I didn't know that was what he was.
All right. If you could please give us your name and address.
Your name and address.
Galaxy Tab A.
No, your name.
Louis Sismadia, 8884 Deborah Court East.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sismadia, and you're asking to construct a 50-foot by 80-foot ice rink with lights for use by the public.
Yes.
Yes. All right. Is there anything else you'd like to tell us about this before we go to the council?
I, I think Louis has sent quite a few letters.
Pretty much everything I put into a letter to the council.
We have the information in, in the packet, Mr. Sismadia. We just always provide the petitioner an opportunity if he or she wants to, to, to address the, the council, and usually it's in person. Unfortunately, it's via Zoom, but we do have all of the information you've provided. So if you'd like us to at this time, I can go to the council for their thoughts and suggestions. Councilmember Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, first off, I think this is a, a great idea to bring before us, and it's a very engaging thing to add to the city here. I thank the petitioner for doing so. I have some questions, not of the petitioner though, but rather the Law Department and our Director of Parks and Recreation, if he's still on the line, I'm not sure if he is or not. Mr. Burner, as this would be a ice arena set up on city property, I guess my only concern here really is the staffing of it to ensure safety, and then any potential legal liability as to that safety and maintenance of the, the ice rink that we're talking about here. Can you kind of give us some information in regards to what your initial thoughts, thoughts are on that?
Sure.
And one other last question there. Would there be some additional insurance rider or something that we either would have through the city, through our current insurance policies, or is that something that could be discussed to make this accomplished? Thank you.
As an old hockey player, I thought this was, it sounds like a great idea on the surface, but as a city attorney, I cringe at the whole prospect of this, this, to be honest with you. From a liability standpoint, we are allowing somebody to put something that's inherently dangerous on city property, and who knows who's going to patrol it? Who knows what condition it's going to be in? I just see, from a liability standpoint, a great deal of problems for the city. I also think we have a great deal of problems when it comes to enforcement on who gets to use the property, because although it'll be made by an private individual, it will be on city property, open to everybody. From a liability, I see, I see, I see a great deal of problems with it from, as much, as much as I find the, the whole prospect intriguing, because it's what we used to do in our backyards all the time as kids, I just, to allow it on city property, I have a problem with it. If it's going to be an ice rink, it should be owned, operated, and maintained by the city of Livonia.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Burner. And next, Mr. Jolly, would you still like to hear from Mr. Davis, Director of Parks and Recreation?
I would just like to hear his thoughts, as it is a novel idea, if he's on the line.
Ted.
I sure am on the line. Can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you. I mean, again, I, I think as an idea, it certainly is interesting. My concern is, as our city attorney stated, was liability. I also am not crazy, if you looked at a site map, it's right behind several people's backyards, right up against fence line, a, a good distance away from any public access points in that park. Those are, those are things that all raise concerns for me. On top of, aside from liability, there's still going to be restoration of the park, which hasn't been addressed. Again, who maintains it? Who's staffing it? We talked about, there was lighting in the proposal, I'm concerned about that. A lot of concerns I have with this project.
Thank you, Mr. Davis, Councilmember Jolly, and then I'll go to Vice President Barr, and then to Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you. Mr. Davis, I might be mistaking here, but weren't we talking about putting up some kind of temporary outdoor ice rink at the Greenmead property as part of this Winter Fest?
Yeah, we are talking about putting up, again, a seasonal ice rink at Greenmead, yes.
So I wonder, I wonder if that's maybe the petitioner does not know about that, and maybe that would suffice his desire to have something like that outside. Thank you.
All right. Vice President Barr.
Thank you, Madam President. One very basic question. Can someone please clarify for me exactly where this is? Because maybe I missed it, but I was struggling to figure that out. I don't know. Mr. Davis knows, or if the petitioner can tell me, like, cross streets or something?
Sure. It's, it's basically Joy and Newburgh. It's in Section 31 of the city.
Okay, that's where I'm looking here, but.
It's a landlocked park. It's, actually, there's only three public access points through it. Boy, you're really asking me a lot right now off the top of my head. Sorry, I wish I had a park map.
Okay, well, that, that's, that's okay, because actually, Mr. Jolly asked some of the questions I was going to ask, and, and that probably makes a number of the other questions I was going to ask moot. I, my only thought, it, it sounds like, as much as I hate to say this, because I couldn't help but smile as I read the proposal, and just the notion of the neighbors getting together, and the ingenuity they've already shown, and the initiative to, to, to think through all the details of this, and just the letter that was included in our packet that was sent to the neighbors, rallying them all to the cause. I mean, there's so much about this that I love. But, yeah, just from a liability standpoint, a financial standpoint, it's problematic. I want to suggest to the, the neighbors, though, and this, we're not going to be able to solve this here, but, but something else you might explore. The neighborhood where I lived for more than a decade, up until a few years ago, was Compton Village, and in Compton Village, they, at least at the time, Ted Davis can tell me if this is not happening anymore, but at least at the time, they were still flooding an area of Dooley Park every year with an ice rink, with an outdoor ice rink. And as I recall, I mean, I was familiar with that because it was in our neighborhood, but as I recall, that was one of two or three such areas in the city that they did that, and maybe somebody else knows where those other areas are. My point is this, there is precedent for the city having outdoor ice rinks in our parks. And when you have a motivated base of neighbors like this, I would recommend to, to the petitioner that you take those neighbors probably to the Parks and Rec Commission and, and propose this for your park. As cool as that was, that it was in our neighborhood, the usage in recent years was a lot lighter than it had been in past years. It looks like, to me, like we potentially have a neighborhood here where that usage would be pretty heavy, and I think that'd be an interesting thing for our, our Parks and Rec Commission to consider, just adding within our park system. So even if this, I, I don't, I can't support this here, as proposed now, as much as my heart wants to, for the reasons stated earlier, but, but I think there's another avenue for you to have this considered, and I could really encourage you to pursue that.
Thank you, Vice President Barr. Councilmember McCullough, and then we'll go to Councilmember Toy.
Thank you, Madam President. Through the chairs to probably, Mr. Burner, I just got a complication. And maybe putting a backyard ice rink in your own property, do we have any ordinances against that, other than, you know, setbacks and features along those lines, if it's on your own property?
I'm pretty certain our zoning ordinances are silent as it pertains to ice rinks. The typical ice rink that I think about when I was a kid, when we built up the snowbanks and flooded it with, with water and then let it freeze, I can't imagine, and again, I don't know this, but I can't imagine our zoning ordinances contemplated that being an issue. So I doubt, I doubt that there is anything that talks about that.
No, thank you. And that, that kind of leads to my point. So I, I know this because for the past few years, I, I have had a 20 by 40 ice rink made in the backyard, and looking over the packet, there's usually three companies that provide these kits, and they do, they, they can, they can go from a 10 to 20 square foot rink all the way up to, obviously, the 50 by 80, which is almost like a full sheet of, it's like a regulation NHL arena. So obviously, hockey is, is near and dear to me, and this is a great idea, but, you know, the, the liability does come in. So I would recommend to the petitioner, you know, I was looking at a satellite view of the backyard, you, you got quite a bit of space back there, and a 50 by 80 might not be, you know, feasible in, in your lot, but, you know, the neighbors, you know, if it's something that you would be interested into maybe shrinking it down a little bit, I know a lot of work goes into it, especially with flooding the rink, building it with the O and 12-foot of boards, so there's a lot of passion and heart that go into it. I think it's a wonderful idea. I, I just think that, you know, with this piece of liability on the back, I would recommend, you know, at your lot and seeing how big of a rink you can fit on it and still keep the neighbors. I don't think you should let this go. I just think that it would probably be the best bet to keep it on, in, in your, in your lot, if possible.
Thank you, Councilmember McCullough, and now we'll go to Councilmember Toy.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I will kind of follow the thinking and, if you will, of Councilman Barr on this issue. You know, unfortunately, we have to consider those kinds of liability issues as we look at our great city and all the nice activities we might be able to do. But I strongly believe in citizen-driven efforts, and to just have to go up to Greenmead to ice skate just isn't, I love Greenmead, but it's not appealing to me. If some of these folks want to do something in our parks, perhaps like was suggested, there should be a sounding board here, which is the Parks and Rec Commission, with hopefully open minds that are promoting a few of these winter outdoor activities. I always thought we should have an ice rink at, on our campus there at City Hall. It made a lot of sense, and have some food trucks around it, or hot chocolate trucks, and do it during the winter months, and get on it early enough so that we can build up that rink and things like that. And I know we all have our favorite areas, but to say the only one we should have, perhaps, at Greenmead, really? Let's, let's look at some of our south-end neighbors, our middle-end neighbors, and I don't want to divide the city, but let's make it convenient for the kids. They're home now, and it's healthy for them evidently to be outside, so, you know, it behooves us to think of those extracurricular activities perhaps out there, and Mr. Davis does a superb job for our city, and I know he doesn't need one more thing added to his plate. She's got a lot already, but perhaps, you know, we can think through this a little bit clearer, and again, I applaud, as many of you have, the residents that have suggested this, but most of all, I'd like to see us do some of those outdoor activities where at all possible, especially if our residents are willing to help. So I want to thank the folks for coming in tonight, but I can't support it with the liability and our attorneys and, and our Parks Director suggesting that we do have some very serious responsibility when it's on city property. So let's try and work it out another way, but let's not give up on it. Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Mr. Councilmember Jolly, did you want to address this again before we go back to the petitioner? I thought you had your hand up. Hi.
Are you speaking to me? My internet.
Yeah, I thought you had your hand up. I'm sorry, Mr. Jolly.
My internet's, it's coming and going, so I apologize. You know, I would just say that, you know, this did come before the Parks and Rec Commission was punted to us because of the, the nature of the request here, and I think a lot of the points have been valid. I think that we have an open-minded Superintendent of Parks and Rec and a open-minded, you know, Parks and Recreation Commission. One is better than none, so let's get one going, and then if it works, let's, let's move them throughout the city if possible, and I, I don't necessarily care where it's at, but I think we need something like this outside. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think with this, we will go back to the petitioner.
Madam President? Sorry, do, do, do we have a resolution?
No, but.
I don't think we do. I'll offer, I'll offer a denying for the.
Okay. All right. That's fine. And at this time, now I'll go back to the petitioner. Good evening, again. And I'm not sure if this is Mr. Sismadia or someone who was there with you, but you.
Yes, Louis is here, and I'm Patty Noack, I'm his neighbor.
Okay.
Can you hear us now? Okay.
Sure can.
We did discuss this with Parks and Rec, like, three, two or three weeks ago, we went to the meeting, and Louis already contacted his insurance company, and there was an umbrella policy they were going to write. I mean, this is not going to be a hockey rink, this is a skating rink. You know, it's for the kids in the neighborhood. Louis is retired, he's a very nice man. He just wants this ice rink. And it's not gigantic, the lights, they, they didn't like the fact that the lighting was possibly going to be going to somebody's house with a extension cord. Well, they've talked about batteries and things now. The gentleman, one gentleman next door works for Kentski, and he said that wasn't a problem. Also, we could put floodlights on our telephone poles, and we could pay for the electricity ourselves. This is, we don't want the city to pay for anything, there's no parking lots. If anybody looks at our park, it's in the middle of our subdivision. You can't drive to it, you have to walk either through somebody's yard or up a little sidewalk off of Pier here, or Deborah Court. I mean, it's a, really like a private park. Nobody comes here.
Thank you, and, and I, I'll go back to council if anyone else would like to address this, and these are the, these are the kinds of things that are very difficult for council members to take a stand and say that, that they're going to deny it, because everything about this is how we want our citizens to be citizens in our city, and all the things that we encourage, and that's looking to make the city a better place, looking to do things for others, using our own talents and resources and financial resources to do things to help other people. And, you know, on its face, it seems ludicrous that we couldn't support this. Unfortunately, we live in a world of laws and litigation, and we can't control who has access to this park, and we can't, as, you know, as much as we know it would be great for the neighborhood, there's nothing, there's no way that we can stop someone from going there and engaging in mischief-making that could potentially cause a lot of danger and harm to other people, and you have an umbrella policy. And again, we, we so appreciate this proposal and all the due diligence that has been done. Unfortunately, your umbrella policy, or Mr. Sismadia's umbrella policy that would protect him from litigation, doesn't protect the city, and the city could end up in a very, very bad situation, being exposed to very damaging and expensive litigation. And, and I'm, I'm so sorry to have to underscore what you heard from council tonight and, and take the air out of what, what just seems on its face and is on its face, a wonderful, generous suggestion, and. a wonderful generous suggestion. And, um, you know, if there's a way that it can be done on private property, that, you know, that then, then it's, the, the city has no liability. And we would, you know, we would think that was great. And in fact, as I think you heard, and I don't know, the, the conversation is sometimes hard to understand. It wouldn't require any approval from City Council to have it on private property.
Okay, private property. There's no lot big enough in this small subdivision. But my question is, a couple of years ago, the city did put a jungle gym set in the little park here. What's the difference between if somebody fell off the jungle gym or fell down in skating and wants to sue the city? People will sue the city?
I would put up the rink on my own private property, but most homes around here are graded. So you can't put up a rink. You end up with two inches of ice at one end and then you end up with eight inches of ice at the other because of the grading. Or you're a bot.
Well, we understand that. And that, there are, and, and, um, I'll just say, and then I'll go to, uh, Mr. Barr and then to our Vice President Barr and then to Councilmember McCullough. There are, every-
Yeah, jungle gym in the back of the park.
Okay.
It's liability.
Mr. Sizmadya, I'd like to address that issue and then we're gonna-
Right.
We're gonna go- And then we'll go back to council and then we'll come back to you if you have something else to say. Everything that the city puts up in our parks, we look at from a risk and a liability perspective. And there are certain liabilities and risks that the city is willing to take. Um, a- and, and we bear those risks and there's always the risk that we're going to get sued because somebody falls on a jungle gym. The difference is, we put it up, we, uh, inspect it, we ensure that it's maintained properly. We simply don't have the resources to, i- if, if people want to put up recreation facilities on their own, on public property, we do not have the manpower and the resources to ensure that they are safe. And, and we understand that logically, it may seem that they would be safe. But, but if we can't ensure that they're safe and control it, then, then that's a, a, a a level of risk and liability the city simply can't, uh, accept. And with that, I'm going to go to Vice President Barr.
Yeah, I was just gonna probably just piggyback on what you were saying, Council President McIntyre, but ju- when you bring up the jungle gym, and I, I did find the park and I am familiar with that park, uh, because I remember us approving that, that jungle gym project, uh, not too long ago. Um, wh- what I'm suggesting you do is to go to the Parks and Rec Commission with a, with a proposal that would be in the same category as that jungle gym, to add an improvement to the park. The difference with what, this isn't sending you on a runaround. The difference is, right now, you're asking to put a, a private rink on public land. What I'm suggesting is that you suggest the Parks and Rec putting a public rink on public land. Um, and I, I can't guarantee you what, what their answer to that will be, once they look at all the factors involved. But I would encourage you to pursue that because I think it's a good idea.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, just kind of follow up is, is, you know, we take, and as we listen to this, this is a very, uh, a tough thing because i- 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 we would love to approve, but there is liability that goes involved. Um, again, these are ideas that, uh, that we will keep note of. And, and again, just as, uh, Vice President Barr said, uh, you know, this would be a great idea for, for a permanent solution that would be, you know, used by the city. So, uh, yeah, that's basically all I got. Thank you.
All right. So, uh, thank you. And with that, if no one from council has anything, we'll go back to the, uh, petitioner one final time. And, um, you should be able to mute yourself and, uh, address the council again. Yes. Hello. We can, I think we could, we'll be able to hear you now.
Louis, you. Okay, I, Louis, like, he's having a hard time. Everything does not come up down there. Um, on the closed caption.
Okay.
Let him know that the one proposal was to go again to the Parks and Recreation, but to suggest that they have the ice rink in our park like the jungle gym and have it as the city, the city-owned ice skating rink. Is that, is that correct?
That is correct. Uh, and I think Councilmember Jolly would like to address this. Councilmember Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. So i- in the hope of a difficult, uh, prospect here for the petitioners that are currently on the line and those who are interested in helping them, um, I will offer a resolution to refer the matter of outdoor ice skating rinks and where they may be viable in the city and where they may not be viable to the city, directly from the City Council to the Parks and Rec Commission for them to consider. So as to not, uh, request or create any additional work for the petitioners in this case. Um, a- and then that way, you know, I don't want to send them back and forth, back and forth. And I know, I know that's not the intention here, but we can do this directly ourselves by asking the Parks and Rec Commission to consider this. And I'll say as well, our Superintendent Ted Davis is on the line. He is listening and I'm sure he's taking notes, uh, because that's what he does. Thank you.
Thank you. And so i- i- if you, if you got that, and again, our apologies that the technology isn't working as well as we wished tonight. That i- i- you do not have to go back to the Parks and Recreation Commission. Um, what Councilmember Jolly just, just, is, just directed the council to do is for the council to refer this directly to the Parks and Rec Commission.
Thank you.
For them to take the issue up. And so you should look forward to this on a future agenda of the Parks and Rec Commission meeting.
Okay.
All right. And, uh, let me just say to, to, and, and I'm sorry, we didn't get your name, who's helping, uh, Mr. Sizmadya or assisting him with the meeting participation, given the difficulties in the technology tonight. If you'd like to give us your name.
Patty Nowak, N-O-W-A-K.
Thank you.
Do you want my address?
Uh, you, that, that's not necessary. But what I wanted to say, uh, Mr. Sizmadya and Ms. Nowak, we wish Lamonia had ninety-two thousand residents, just like you. And, um, we pride ourselves on being a city of, of great people. And we are a city of great people. But, um, your willingness to come forward and want to do something again with your own time and resources is, is simply amazing. And we're glad that you, you understand why despite our, our hearts wanting us to, to approve it. Um, we can't, but we, we want to make something good come of this and all the work that you've done. So look forward to having this on a future Parks and Rec Commission meeting agenda. Thank you. We wish you well and we wish you a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Councilman Jolly. We'll be hearing from you soon, I hope.
All right. Thank you. And, and with that, um, we move on to item number three. And this is, uh, to request adoption of a resolution that approves the Wayne County Hazard Mitig- Mitigation Plan dated September fourteenth, twenty twenty twenty. This comes to us from, uh, Sergeant Brian Kahn, Director of Emergency Preparedness for a five, for a period of five years in order to receive funds made available through certain mitigation grant programs pursuant to the Code of Federal Regulations, uh, Title forty-four, Chapter one, Subchapter D, Part two zero one, Section two oh one, uh, Point six, Point C, Point five, which has been approved for implementation from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA. And, um, a- and I'd just like to, um, I'd just like to say that not only does Emergency Director Kahn, um, shepherd the city through every conceivable emergency, and this year it's been COVID, COVID, more COVID, COVID again, power outages, all manner of things. Not only does he do all of that, uh, extremely well, he also finds the time to look for grants to, um, to make those available for the city to help us in, in our efforts to, to be a better city and better prepared for emergency situations. Uh, with that, uh, Director Kahn. Are you there, Brian? Maybe I said too much and now he doesn't want to talk to us. Brian, are you there? Brian, are you there? All right. I- if it's okay with council, since we're having some difficulties getting to, uh, hearing from Mr. Kahn, um, let's go on to item number four and then we'll circle back. We'll, we'll give it one more ti- time. Um, it looks like Chief Cade though is with us and maybe he will be able to talk to us. Um, there we go. Maybe he's speaking, um, for, uh, Director Kahn. Chief Cade, are you there?
I am, Madam President. Uh, am I coming through okay?
You are.
I mean, huh, uh, obviously this has been a challenging last couple of days with the power outage and, uh, the other issues. And I, it's obvious that, uh, Director Kahn is experiencing some of that as well. Uh, just very briefly, I don't have a package in front of me, but I will, um, just address the, uh, efforts of, of, uh, Mr. Kahn and his office to, uh, uh, look for the opportunities for the various, uh, uh, not, not only the, uh, the, uh, opportunity for, for-
Hmm. Thank, now we seem to have lost the chief. Um, Director Kahn, are you there? Well, we heard a little bit from the chief. We're not able to hear from Director Kahn. Is it, would council like to, go on, um?
Madam President?
Yes, Vice President.
We've had this in the past. I, I did look through a little bit of the paperwork provided and this is, um, pretty standard stuff here. And I think we're familiar with what this is. It's, it's approving a report that we have to provide every so often, um, for federal, um, federal reporting purposes. This is something that's already been submitted to FEMA and already been approved. This is council formally, um, approving something that's really baked and ready to go. I'm, I'm willing to offer approving on this for consent if there's no objection.
Thank you. And it looks like we do have the chief back with us. Uh, Chief, I, I don't know if you're back on, if you heard Vice President Barr's approving resolution offer for consent. And if you have anything else you'd like to add?
Uh, yeah, I just came in just at the end of that. And I appreciate that, Vice President Barr. Uh, and I have nothing more to add, but, uh, you know, uh, Director Kahn does a great job for the community and, and for our city in preparing us for the various, uh, uh, situations through that twenty twenty has provided for us. And, uh, the seeking out the grant opportunities as he's done here, uh, for us is, uh, certainly admirable. And I just appreciate the support of council. I know that Director Kahn does as well. And, uh, I appreciate, uh, Vice President Barr stepping forward, uh, and moving this item, uh, within the council. So thank you, council. Appreciate that.
Thank you. And, uh, Chief, if you could maybe communicate with, uh, if, with, uh, Director Kahn, if he hasn't been able to hear this and just let him know.
Thank you, President. Appreciate it.
But if you could shoot him a text and let him know. Thank you. Uh, Director Kahn, we'll give you one more. I, I see that you're back. One more shot to, uh, make your voice heard. All right. With that, we will move on, uh, since we have it offered for consent, to item number four. And thank you to everyone. Thank you, uh, Director Kahn. This is a request for council approval on a proposed lot split. This comes from the Department of Assessment for the property located on the east side of Merriman Road between West Chicago and Plymouth Roads in the northwest quarter of Section thirty-five, one one three one six Merriman, to, and to waive the property depth to width ratio. This is tax item one thirty-eight dash ninety-nine dash zero zero five eight dash zero zero zero. This is petition twenty twenty dash zero nine dash LS dash zero four. Uh, Mr. Terramina, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I can just make some opening comments on this. A lot split on Merriman Road, uh, it's a single acreage parcel that, uh, currently, uh, measures a hundred and eighty feet in width by two hundred and twenty-six feet. Uh, does contain a single family residence. Uh, the intent is to split the property into two equal halves that would measure ninety feet, uh, by two hundred and twenty-six feet each. Uh, that turns out to be just less than a half acre minimum requirement. This is zone R U F. So both parcels would be, uh, about fourteen hundred and forty square feet shy of, of the half acre requirement. There's no issue with the lot width. Uh, it's really just, uh, an area, um, deficiency that would require your approval. Um, other notes would be the, uh, the need to remove the garage on the, uh, on the lot that's being created. Um, since, since, um, that would create an accessory parcel, ex- excuse me, an accessory building on a parcel that does not have a principal structure. But, uh, that's probably secondary to the, uh, to the meat for the, uh, uh, the lot area, um, waiver. And, and, and you, you'll know, I'll note, and, and you can probably see this on the, uh, information packet. This is very consistent with the pattern of development in the area. Uh, this is the largest lot on this side of the road. Uh, just about every other parcel has been split, uh, to the ninety-foot dimension at their request. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Terramina. Uh, Councilmember McCullough.
Madam President, uh, through the chair to Mr. Terramina, um, obviously with this being, uh, an approval for just the lot split, those items that you mentioned, because I think there was a few, there was, um, no access to public stormwater, the garage parcel B be demolished, just as you were stating. Does that, do those requirements carry in this motion? Or is that another process down the line of plan? You muted.
Mark, you're muted.
No, I don't think the, uh, the building is something that the council, the, the garage is something that you need to address. That's something that would, uh, have to be addressed by the Zoning Board of Appeals if they wanted to keep that structure on the, on the property after the split. Uh, the issue of the stormwater is one that would be reviewed administratively through the Engineering Division. Uh, I'm assuming that there are options available. What exactly those are, I don't know. Maybe a drywall system, but Todd could, uh, could address that.
No, that, that, that kind of covers it. I mean, honestly, i- it seems like those li- those items are listed. Um, I'm fine to offer an approval for consent if there's no objections.
Um, Vice President, thank you, Councilmember McCullough. Vice President Barr, did you still want to add something?
Nope, not anymore. Thanks.
Okay. All right. So Councilmember McCullough has offered this for approval on consent. Are there any, uh, any, uh, other thoughts? Anyone not want to place on consent? All right. It's been, uh, offered on, it'll be on the consent agenda of the meeting of December twentieth. Number five is a request to authorize building plans scanned into electronic media and authorize expenditure. This comes to us from the Department of Inspection. Under State of Michigan Scanning and Microphone Services Extended Purchasing Program to avoid losing the paper history files due to unfortunate events. Do we have, uh, do we have Jerome with us this evening? Jerome?
Good evening, Madam President. And council, uh, just, uh, we are, we've obviously in the last couple of years had most of our, uh, history files of all of our properties scanned. Over a million documents were scanned. And this is the last part of that, which is all of our commercial industrial plans. And they are required to be maintained for the life of the structure. And, you know, some of them are becoming deteriorated already. And this is an option, uh, an opportunity for us not only to save those documents, but to make them more readily accessible to staff members and other departments and to FOIAs. So, uh, we would just, uh, ask that, uh, council would, authorize this, uh, um, already budgeted, um, expenditure.
Counsel?
Counsel?
Uh, Councilmember?
Councilmember? Toy?
Uh, Madam Chair, uh, I'd like to offer an approving, please, uncom- um, if you don't mind.
Any, uh, objections? All right. We'll place it on the consent adj- Mr. Hand.
Thank you very much.
All right. Item number six is request to pre-purchase of one, twenty twenty Lifeline Type One Superliner Ambulance on a twenty twenty Ford F four fifty X L T chassis. This is Houston Galveston Area Council H J F I Property Purchase Consortium. Lamonia Fire, this comes to us from Lamonia Fire and Rescue to replace a current frontline ambulance from trade-in of our, of a two thousand and six Freightliner ambulance from budget funds. This is council resolution, uh, sixty-one dash seventeen. And, um, I'm guessing that we probably have a Deputy Chief Unsworth with us. Chief?
Good evening, Madam President and council members. Can you hear me? Respectfully requesting the council approve the purchase of the 2020 Lifeline ambulance. For a, the vehicle is being purchased through the Houston Galveston Consortium, which gives us a discount. We've purchased through them in the past. This ambulance is going to be used to replace one of our frontline ambulances, which is 2011 model with 104,000 miles on it. This purchase is part of our regular vehicle replacement program and it is purchased through 2021 budgeted funds. The 2011 model will be downgraded to a reserve status and we will be either auctioning off or trading in a 2006 ambulance in its place. Thank you for consideration. I'm sorry, one, one more thing. I'm sorry. We're, we're requesting to waive the formal bid process because it's purchased through the HJF.
All right. Councilmember White.
I'll offer approving on consent if there's no objection.
Anyone have any objections? All right, we'll place it on consent. Purchase. Superliner ambulance. All right. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, council.
Uh, somebody has a hand up. Oh, that's Councilmember Toy. Councilmember Toy? Did, did you?
Madam Chair, I just wanted to make a comment of ambulances are so necessary as all of us know. And to keep up to date, ambulance is just so important. So I commend Councilwoman White for moving that, like, expediting that. And you as well, Madam Chair, for getting it on the agenda. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. All right. Item number five, seven, request renew a five-year service agreement. This comes from the Public Service Division with Census USA. It's an automatic five-year extension to provide software and equipment to obtain remote water meter reads. I'm guessing that's Mr. Rushlow. Good evening, Jacob.
Yes, good evening. Thank you very much, Madam President, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. As you're aware, Census manufactures our water meters and the software used by the meter reading system. Renewing our agreement here with Census will ensure the city receives the latest updates to the software program, which helps us maintain minimal water, water loss and improve efficiency in meter reading and billing. This renewal also upgrades our software from the standard program that we currently have to the enhanced program at no charge to the city. This is an important upgrade to note because it will allow for over-the-air updates to reprogram and correct, which we're currently experiencing a warranty issue affecting about 216 electronic meter registers. And without this upgrade, those would need to be done manually, one meter at a time, from one property to the next. So with that, it's our recommendation from the Public Service Division of DPW that council proceed to authorize approval of this service agreement and authorize signatures to execute the agreement.
Thank you, Jacob. Counsel. Uh, let's see. Uh, Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm familiar with Census. They're pretty much the name in the game when it comes to these remote water meters. I'd be happy to offer an approving for consent if there's no objections.
All right. Any objections? Seeing none, we'll place it on the consent agenda. Thank you, Jacob.
Thank you.
Moving, moving on to item number eight. This is a request to accept a stormwater facilities maintenance agreement. This comes to us from the Engineering Division from MCM 12001 Farmington LLC in conjunction with the construction of a storm drainage system that provides adequate drainage for the property developed at 11999 and 12001 Farmington Road in the southeast quarter of Section 28. Mr. Zalinski.
Good evening, Madam President and City Councilmembers. As you are aware, this is the exciting part of the meeting that we get to after the first seven. I know they were exciting as they were. This is even better. This is a bit of a housekeeping issue with this particular item. As you know, Quali Mall Craft built next to Consumers Energy there on Farmington Road relocated their facilities over there. And now it's just a matter of housekeeping to ensure that their stormwater system is maintained by themselves. If not, then obviously we would come in to assist in that manner. Hopefully we'll have to in the future, but looking for city council's approval to get the maintenance agreement signed and then on to the Wayne County for recording. Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Toy.
I would like to offer an approving with that enthusiastic presentation. I can't help but think, let's move this along to consent.
All right. If there are no objections, we'll place this on consent. All right. Item number nine is a request to approve the 2021 Road Repair Program. This too comes from the Engineering Division as reviewed by the Citizen Advisory Committee on Roads for the ninth year of the 10-year paving mileage approved by Livonia residents. Mr. Zalinski, you're on a roll.
Thanks. It's hard to believe it's November and we're already thinking about next year's program to get out there and reconstruct. So, you know, leaves are falling. Now it's time to get out there and get those roads studied and get fixed next year. So we can start out in April, May. Looking for your approval as we had a meeting with the Citizens Road Advisory Committee meeting on October 15th, with a supplemental meeting on October 28th at City Hall for residents to bring their concerns to us. We're looking for your approval based on their recommendation of approximately 63 segments of roadway in which we're going to use $4.9 million for concrete repairs, $4 million for asphalt, and $800,000 for selective slab. So again, looking for approximately $9.9 million in road repairs in our ninth year for the 2021 road program. Be happy to answer any questions if you have them. And again, appreciate all your assistance and support in the past, over the past eight years to again, continue on with improving our infrastructure throughout the city. Thanks.
Mr. Zalinski, before I go to the council, I would like to know if as part of this, if you can absolutely guarantee us that 2021 is going to be a better year.
Nothing's guaranteed. I, I can't even guarantee a line when they pulled one out on Sunday. I don't know how, but you know, they, they gave away a chance, everybody the chance to lose that one. So we'll see.
Hey, a nice, a nice deferral there. All right. With that, I'll go to council. Anyone? Councilmember McCullough.
Madam President, and thank you for the, the great intro and all the hard work that the Citizens Advisory Committee put into this. Obviously, improving our infrastructure is a huge key and I'd be more than happy to offer an approving resolution for consent. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no objections, I believe we'll place that on consent. And Todd, before we continue with the Todd Show, I believe that Emergency Director Khan would like to again, to communicate with us.
Madam President, yeah, can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you.
I, I apologize, President McIntyre and all the council members and everybody in the audience. I, I apparently am very technologically, well, I'm not technologically savvy. So I, I apologize. I don't know what happened. But it is what it is. So it goes with today. Anyways, I'm more than happy to, if, if you don't mind, if we can, address the hazardous mitigation plan. If anybody has any questions, I can further go into it if you would like.
I think we're all set. It was placed on consent agenda. But thank you for making sure that we have the opportunity to ask any questions. Does anyone have any questions that they would like to ask of our long-awaited guest, Director Khan? All right. We're all set. Thank you for your assistance in, in tonight and in your employment with the city.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Thanks. All right. Now we're back to the, the Z Show. Number 10 is a request for additions to the local street system for the Act 2021 Act 51 computations. This too comes to us from the Engineering Division for streets or portions thereof newly opened in 2020. Mr. Zalinski.
It's hard to believe that we just paved Capri a year ago in November and we're looking to add Capri and Dover to the system of our Act 51 map. One's 600 feet long, the other one's just over 500 feet. Again, this helps us in assistance to the state through Act 51 funds to allow for future funding from the state. This will also allow that the DPW will recognize these streets to maintain them and plow them during the winter time and will set them through the end of December. Looking for city council's approval to accept these as public roads and looking forward to both these subdivisions getting streetlights here in the near future over the next couple of weeks. And again, making a safe public road to add to our system and get the benefits of the Act 51 funds. I'll be happy to answer any questions if there's any. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zalinski. Councilmember White.
I'll offer approving on consent if there's no objection.
Seeing no objection, we'll place that on consent. All right. Item number 11 is a request to amend the engineering contract, the qualified base selection QBS process with Anderson X. and Westrick Incorporated for Design Engineering Services for the 2021 Concrete Road Program, Contract 21C. Comes to us from the Engineering Division regarding the same council resolution 365-16. Mr. Zalinski, keep going.
All right. Just looking for city council's approval with AEW who's done this program since 2008 to help assist us in design of the road repair program based on 4.9 million. We are requesting city council approval for that design cost of $210,700 to assist us in that endeavor and looking for this improvements in 2021. Be happy to answer any questions. As you know, Scott Lockwood is a vital part of this program and his team. And happy to have them on board as they do a fabulous job for us and their inspectors to ensure quality control and our streets that are being put in meet our specifications and standards. Thanks.
Thank you. And before I go to council, I just want to say that I see Mr. Lockwood with us and I made this comment about OHM and AEW and I don't mean to leave out any other firms because of other firms that we work with do the same thing, but these outstanding firms that we've done business with for a long time because they're outstanding and because they always meet, they're the best bids or they meet our QBS or qualified, our qualification-based selection criteria. They never take our business for granted. And when the meetings are in person, they're always here in person. It doesn't matter how late the meetings are. Always one of their senior principals is here. And I, I know maybe it's a little bit easier to call in on Zoom, but they're, they're always here, every meeting to answer any questions. So thanks. With that, I'll go to council.
So moved.
Is that for, is that for?
The one we're on.
Consent?
Yeah, that'd be great. Consent.
Okay. Any objections? Seeing none, we will place that item of approval on the consent agenda. Item number 12, request to amend the engineering contract through the QBS Qualified Qualification-Based Selection Process with Anderson X. and Westrick for Design Engineering Services for the 2021 Concrete Road Maintenance Slash Selective Slab Program. This is Contract 21J. Comes from the Engineering Division regarding the same council resolution 365-16.
Madam President, this is my last item before we turn it over to Paul Bernier, the city attorney, for his ordinance changes. But again, this is the selective slab program in which DPW and engineering have a cooperative list of locations that we try to address where the trees upkeep the pavement or we have a drainage concern or something that we can obviously make a big difference to the homeowners in front of these areas that need to be fixed on the concrete program. We're looking for approximately $800,000 to be spent throughout the city and requesting your approval for AEW to assist us in this manner. Any amount of $42,400. Again, Scott Lockwood's with AEW on tap here to bring any questions, but appreciate your assistance to approve this item. Thank you.
Move to approve for consent.
Uh, Councilmember Jolly has moved to suggest approval on consent. If there are no objections, place on consent. Item 13 is a proposed amendment to the Livonia Code of Ordinances is amended. This comes to us from the Department of Law to amend Section 070 of Chapter 2.36 Commission on Aging, Section 04040 of Chapter 2.40 Arts Commission and Section 040 of Chapter 244 Commission on Children and Youth, Section 020 of Chapter 2.52, the Historical Commission, and Section 080 of Chapter 2.56, the Historic Preservation Commission to reflect departmental changes.
Good evening. Let me apologize. I can't be as chipper as Todd Zalinski at 9:30 out of Monday after we've lost electricity. So let me apologize right off the bat. This is, this is simply a cleanup of the ordinances to reflect the changes that were made in the Department of Community Resources, putting most of these things under Ted Davis and the Parks and Recreation. It's just to clean up the ordinances.
Councilmember Jolly.
Thank you. So, Mr. Bernier, just for for an understanding here, because Ted Davis is overseeing the Parks and Recreation Department, right? And all these things are reporting through him at this point. Does that essentially mean that all these separate commissions that we're referencing here tonight retain their original jurisdiction as, as to Ted? Is that correct? Or are they in some way now overlapping in certain ways?
The reality of most of these, these departments or these commissions are that they should have been under the Parks and Recreation Commission and under the director in the first place. As, as council knows, the history of the department was that it became a, I don't want to call it a dumping ground, but it became a, a department that were taking things that were not part of its original charter. And so, so the, the mayor tried to get that department back to what it was supposed to be. And the placement of these where it was more logically fell into place. So that was the reason for it. So, so it does more logically fall under Ted Davis and the Park and Recreation and under Mr. Davis's directorship.
Okay, so I, a little bit more direct way of answering this, or asking this rather. So because Parks and Rec is overseeing the senior center now, would the Parks and Rec Commission ever consider anything to do with senior center programming or events? Or would they still be funneled through the old structure?
That is something that will probably be brought to council in the near future on consideration on those issues. As of now, it's just under the directorship of Ted Davis, under his directorship. But the issue of fees and costs, what, what is the perk, that will come to council in a relatively short period of time for council's consideration of the matter. Because, because if you, if you look at our charter right now, there are arguments that could be made both ways. And so it'll be brought, it'll be brought to council so council can have an intelligent discussion of the issue.
Thank you, sir.
Could you just suggest that council could have an intelligent discussion?
Well, not at 9:30, of course.
We, we appreciate the vote of confidence, Attorney Bernier. Councilmember Toy.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I expect the wishes and the thought that's going into a lot of this through the administration. But what concerns me is as we look at these, and maybe I'm just living through the past a little bit, but as we're looking through these and we're saying there's more to come, then why wouldn't this go into committee of the whole right now so that we study it all at once? So that we do make a very intelligent, long-range kind of decisions on this rather than scrap it together, if you will. And perhaps that's not the right word, but it concerns me that, you know, we're, we're, we're putting this under Mr. Davis, that under Mr. Davis, and and he's a very capable individual. Don't get me wrong, but I, I'm just concerned of that, that workload and, and what that all means. Cause I'm not real clear on it. I'm thinking of the old ways. Perhaps I need to get my mind out of that. But if we could hit the pause button for a minute, I might feel a little bit clearer on this. And maybe I'm reading into it too much, but I'd be willing to offer a committee of the whole on this, Madam President.
All right, council. Let me see. I have someone who, I'm trying to get over here to see who's. Mr. Davis.
Good evening, council, yet again. You know, to answer Councilwoman Toy's question, I mean, it is a lot, but just as there was in Community Resources, there is support staff that does assist as liaisons for these commissions. It is certainly not me attending every single commission meeting, although I have attended most since we have transitioned. You know, I think this is simply a matter of housekeeping in the sense that these You know, I think this is simply a matter of housekeeping in the sense that these ordinances, when they were written, they specifically named Community Resources as the city department they were working with. And really, all we're doing here is just changing it to reflect the current administration structure, which puts Parks and Recreation as a liaison for these commissions. That's really all that's taking place right now, and Paul, please correct me if I'm wrong on this.
Yeah, what I wanted to say was, it's kind of odd that the ordinances anyway list a particular department that a commission should fall under, because generally speaking, that's a management prerogative. Who gets to control that? It's, so it's kind of an unusual situation that this lists it particularly, that this is under the Department of Community Resources. And the reality of it, it's not anymore. It's being directed by Ted Davis, and usually those are, like I say, management prerogatives, who gets to manage the various departments. And we're just doing it this way to recognize the reality of the situation right now and to make sure currently that our ordinance reflects what's happening. Now, could council consider the entire scenario in a committee of the whole? Absolutely. I'm not saying you shouldn't, that's a council decision to make, but what we're trying to do right now is have the reality reflect, the ordinances reflect reality.
Councilmember Toy.
In all due respect, the reality is, when any new administration comes in, they are gonna look at the overall health of the city, and what they see will be the best course of action, I get that. But with some of the comment that was made, that we're gonna bring other things in at you now, I just think it cleans it up if you do it kind of all at once, because everybody has different opinions on what should happen with different commissions and different roles and all that. And I respect the administration for their insightfulness and their forward thinking, but I also want to understand it in a deeper way of understanding that, and I'm very concerned that one individual that is highly capable has a lot of workload. Those are huge, and I, you can have staff all you want, but you also got to manage staff and know what they're doing. So I want to, I want to be clear on that, and so that's why I'm offering committee of the whole on the topic. Thank you.
All right, so we have a committee of the whole offered, and I'm sorry, I've lost track. Do we have an approving resolution also offered, or only committee, only committee of the whole?
I'll offer an approving as well for consideration. I understand what Councilwoman Toy's saying, and she's right that if we're gonna bite the apple, we should eat the whole apple. But I think in this circumstance, let's think about it for two weeks and then figure out what we want to do. Thank you.
All right, so we have two resolutions then that will be on the regular, and that is a referral of this issue to committee of the whole, as well as an approving resolution. All right. This, we go back to audience communication. If there's anyone in the audience who'd like to communicate with the council on any item not on the season's agenda, now's an opportunity to do so. Otherwise, we are adjourned at nine thirty-five. Good night, Livonia, wishing everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you, Casey and the Information Systems Team. Thank you to Livonia Cable, and thank you for hitting the closed captioning, working this evening on short notice. Thank you, and very thankful for everyone and for this great city. Good night. Happy Thanksgiving.